Festerson. Gurnat.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem. Jerem, did he say yes? There he is. Stothard.
Here.
Thompson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
With this being the last council meeting before Presidents' Day, I just wanted to commemorate that national holiday and thank our forefathers for their vision for this great country. And this being the last meeting before Valentine's Day, I want to reach to say happy Valentine's Day to everybody, to them and the loved ones. Thanks.
You get your own day. No comment.
Sir, your day was yesterday.
City Clerk Siruside, publication date record on February 8th, notice for a repeat council and regular city council meeting February 12th, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final reading and plan board attachments will take items five, six, seven, and eight as one case. Five is ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Exarban Business and Educational Campus for a 92-room hotel, a 159-unit memory care, assisted and independent living facility, and a restaurant located northeast of 72nd and Pine Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution of a primary plot entitled Exarban Center is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seven is a plot entitled Exarban Center is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers five, six, seven, and eight. Again now, are there any proponents?
Afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, here for the applicant. This is a redevelopment of the first add a business park and education campus. Have our final plat and mixed-use agreement for you. We are under conditional approval and we have met those conditions. I'd just be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if we can have that put back up. Would you just take a minute to perhaps with a pen or your finger, you can describe on your chart here, what's the, where's the creek? Where's 72nd Street? Where's Pine?
Sure.
Where's the hotel? What kind of service hotel it'll be?
Yep, you bet. So this property is located here, 72nd Street, north is up, Poppleton and 71st. The creek, Papio Creek, runs here on the east side of the property. This proposed building here is a memory care assisted living and independent living facility. That one of these buildings will go first with the project. The other component is a restaurant, sit-down restaurant, yet to be named, and then a hotel that has yet to be named as well. But it is a full-service hotel, probably like a Staybridge or, I don't want to say Marriott, but that level of service and room prices, 92 units, meeting all of our post-home order construction items that we need to meet, making sure that we're taking care of our first half inch before it runs into the creek there. We have no public improvements on this project. Everything is inside of the property, dedicating a little bit of additional right-of-way, but mostly everything has been at this property for quite some time, so just a repurposing.
Any sidewalks?
The sidewalks will be added onto Poppleton that are programmed for the street as, you know, when the street was built with no sidewalk, but those will be added, yes.
And what is the rough dollar expenditure in terms of the project?
I want to say we're probably, and I'd have to look at our, probably right around, probably 25 million.
Thank you. Well, I want to just express gratitude for taking what had been a vacant site for a number of years now and figuring out a way to bring some value to that section of the western part of the Exarban development, so wish you luck.
Thank you.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all past seven to zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance on final reading and plan board attachments, item number nine, ordinance vacating the east-west alley between Britton Cummings from 18th Street to Florence Boulevard and Florence Boulevard to 20th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine was held on February the 5th, 2013.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number 10 is ordinance vacating a segment of the north-south alley abutting Lot 4, Wilcox Second Edition, replat 2, which is west of 26th Street and north of Oak Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number 10 was held on February the 5th, 2013.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Resolutions, rate primary plats, plats and subdivision agreements. Item number 11 is resolution of a primary plat entitled Blue Barn Hill located southwest of 10th and Pacific Street is hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Dan Dolson, Heart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. We are developers and engineers. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Dan, just a question, quick question for you. This is the new location for the Blue Barn Theater, right?
That's correct.
Which is a great development and a brand-new building's conceived there, right?
Yes, you know, actually 10th Street's turning into kind of a development zone. I did the CO2 project three, four blocks south of this. Blue Barn's here, there's some other things in the work in the neighborhood. Little Italy's made a big impact and we've been a part of that. Nancy Mammel owns this property. She's dividing it into the Blue Barn lot and then the remainder lot she has, she's talking to a very interested party, I can't say who, but she ended up developing that as well.
Okay.
So this takes care of that. This'll clean up the corner. As you know, the new standards are bringing out bumpouts for the pedestrians to have preliminary crossings and that type of thing, so.
It's several million-dollar reinvestment.
That's correct.
Right. And a great asset to our community, the theater is.
Absolutely.
And tell me what the timeframe, when is construction?
They have gone through a conceptual phasing and a costing, and so Blue Barn is in the process of doing the fundraising right now. I've not been privy to those dates, but if I had to guess, it would be within, in a year, they'd probably start full design.
So it could be, have a new location in 2014.
Probably, yeah, approximately.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Gurnat.
I do agree that this is a great investment, starting from Old Market South. I think Ms. Mammel sees the potential of growth along the 10th Street corridor and...
Don't forget south Omaha, Nancy.
They, she has the, her project, the building project down on 10th and Worthington.
Yes.
Is awesome.
Even though some people don't understand design, but I think this thing fits in very
well. And the potential for that heading south is just, just awesome and exciting. So thank you for your work on that as well and thanks to Nancy for seeing that potential.
Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, this is one of those that we've been working on quite some time now. Councilman Gurnat and I, seemed like three and a half years ago, started working on the neighborhood overlay with planning for 10th Street with Dahlem and Park Neighborhood and Old Market South Neighborhood, and then to see the CO2 project come about and everything they had to go through to now have their coffee shop, that'll come about there and I think be a wonderful addition. And you can also see the public improvements that have done there in front of the CO2 to provide more angle parking and hopefully that'll continue to the north, but, and I too am aware of the prospects to be developed to the west of the Blue Barn and they're not ready to be announced yet because there's still details to be worked out, but it would be an exciting addition and wonderful development for that neighborhood. So as, as Old Market expands to the south and to the Little Italy, everything that's going on to the east, it's, it's been tens of millions of dollars in investment there.
It's quite a bench, quite a change.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, a student-only meeting being held February 19th. Agenda items number 12 through 13 shall be laid over three weeks to March 5th for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 14, the Blue Martini, 10930 Pacific Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location, change of stockholders.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here with the applicant Caitlin About three years ago, Mr. Hunter Sadle came to you. This, this location did have some difficulties out 114th and Pacific area. He came in and his management team completely cleaned it up. He then later went on and bought the Passion Lounge out, out west, which will be the next thing coming up. He unfortunately this past year, even though he was a young man, suffered some severe health setbacks, two, two heart attacks, so he wanted to get out of the business. So he is selling the business to Caitlin here and she has taken the, the management, the certified management course and also the liquor, liquor control course, and we're here for, for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you very much. Ms. Munson, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions here. You, you and both Ms. Sadle are going to be at both businesses, right?
Yes.
You're going to be the owner for both businesses?
Yes, I am.
You need to give your name.
Oh, Caitlin Munson, sorry.
All right, all right, thank you. With Ms. Sadle as your manager, is she going to be your full-time manager?
Yes, she will be.
For both places?
Yes.
And she will be there on the premises all the time as a manager, right?
For business hours, yes.
During the business hours? What is her background as far as being a manager?
Well, she's been managing the Blue Martini for the past three years. She's been in the bar business for many years now, so that's how she's been into it this whole time.
Okay. And she doesn't have any other job? She's, she will just be doing this job, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is Alfredo Diaz Senior and Alfredo Diaz Junior involved in this at all?
Alfredo Diaz Junior is my fiance, but he doesn't have anything to do with it, no.
Okay, so he has nothing to do with either establishment at all?
No.
Okay, and what about Alfredo Diaz Senior?
He's a promoter for me. He does more of my traveling, getting my alcohol, just, he's just an employee for me just to help out.
So he is an employee?
Yes.
And you said he gets your alcohol?
Yes. Because he's, he works with the whole alcohol distributors, because he's been working for Hunter and Sherry for many years, too.
I think that's all I have to, to ask you right now. Is Mr. Mumgarde here?
Yep, back here.
I think you have to say your name, don't you?
Tom Mumgarde, Deputy City Attorney.
All right, thank you. Ms. Munson just said Alfredo Diaz Senior is involved in this establishment, buying liquor, she said, or, or obtaining her liquor. I believe he has a felony. Is he in any way, should be not allowed to be involved as she says he is?
Well, as a convicted felon, he cannot have, he cannot own, or own more than 25% of the ownership of the business that holds the license. He is not qualified to be a manager or officer or shareholder, officer or director. He can be an employee when she says that he obtains the liquor for her, for her. Well, if his job is just simply to contact the wholesaler and arrange for the liquor deliveries, that would be sufficient. He could not, however, be involved in the payment for the liquor. He couldn't write checks. He couldn't do any of the management jobs. He couldn't hire or fire, do anything like that, or make any of the policy decisions for the business.
Okay.
And has, has, if he invested money, that would depend upon the level of investment and any ownership interest that came with it.
Okay, Ms. Munson, is Mr. Diaz Senior, is he, does he have any investments?
No, he does not.
Okay. Does he write any of the paychecks?
No, I do.
Does he do any of the management?
No, I do.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have now.
Mr. Gurnat.
What are the operations of the Blue Martini? What would they be?
The operation?
Hours.
From 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
Okay.
Four nights, four nights a week.
For the Blue Martini, it's three nights a week.
Okay. And those nights are again?
It's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And if I may, on the Passion Lounge, what are their days and hours of operation?
It's the same, 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
And your manager is going to be expected to be at both places?
She, I know obviously one person can't go to one, two places at once. That's what I'm there for and she's there for, too. And we do have a great staff as well.
What's the size of your operating staff at the Blue Martini? How many people?
We have, we have four people.
Okay. Is that including or not including your security if and when you have that?
Uh, no.
Okay. And the type of operation at the Blue Martini, if I'm reading, standard lounge operation with dancing to music provided by a DJ. Do you ever have live bands?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And by the address here, do you have an outdoor facility there?
We do, but we don't use it, so we've never had to use it. Since I have been part of it, I have never used the outdoors.
Okay.
But I know they have built a fence around to have it, the outdoors. I believe they had a passed permit for it, though.
So you're, you don't anticipate of having the use of that for any activities that are in conjunction with what you're doing inside the bar, like amplified music outside?
Oh, no. There's a hotel across the street. I would not want to do that.
And I'm sure the residents would appreciate it.
Yeah. No.
I don't know, I'm just, this one kind of melts my earwax a little bit here.
If I could, Mr. Councilman, I think the, basically the same management team is going to be in place. The ownership's changing, but the companies are actually, she's just buying into the stock of the company. Everything is staying the same. And these locations, which had serious problems, have stopped under this management group and she's been part of that group. She's worked at Blue Martini for the last three years. She's part of the group that's fixed the problem. Now, if there is a management or ownership issue, I'm sure the commission will call us down and we'll discuss that with them, but as far as the location, this is the same use as been, this is, this is not new. This is what's been, been in operation there for the last several years. One year at Passion, it's the same, everything's staying the same. At least initially, probably for six months to a year, manager will stay the same.
I think that's what's worrying me, but I just run that history lesson through my mind. All right. Thank you both. Mr. President, thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, this is the, the same old location as the Naughty Lounge, is that correct?
Yes.
And we're very familiar with the history with that lounge. One of the things that I hope you have been doing, if you have not, and I'd want you to do, but what contact do you have with the, with the hotel manager?
We keep in contact with them, like if they have any concerns or issues, we keep well aware of everything, so.
So are you regularly meeting with them?
Not regularly, but I can surely do that more often, though.
Would you give the council, assure us that you'll meet not only, but with that, those folks, also the dentist and the other commercial owners there?
Oh, yes.
At the Passion.
Within the next two weeks, if possible.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's good that we haven't heard reports, so that means you're doing something right. But it only takes one promoter, and we're working on some things right now to try and control promoters, but one wrong promoter and then all that work will go down the drain.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
You stated that the staff or the management team was four individuals, but that did not include security, is that correct?
Yes.
So how, what is your security staff? What do you anticipate?
We have a contract through Cowboy Security, so that's paid through by the door, whatever, like it's through the promote, the promoters, whatever they may get at the door, they pay all the security.
Well, no, I just mean, how many security people do you anticipate having?
For the Blue Martini or Passion or altogether?
The, we're on agenda item number 14, so it's Blue Martini.
Blue Martini, I say about two or three.
Two or three, okay.
If we need more, but I don't think it needs it.
Okay. I mean, you're, I mean, just from your business plan, it, you, you're trying to attract a large crowd, so, you know, it just, and to the point where you got a hotel right across the street, it's always good to have that stuff in place ahead of time.
And if I could, Mike Kelly, they've also, they've cut back on the crowds, the type of people, that's why they're not having problems. And that's why they don't have extensive security because they haven't needed it. They have security, but they don't, they haven't needed, like some of the places that I've represented are needing five and six and security people or more. They haven't needed that because they've cut back on the type of people who've come in. They have a salsa night, they have different, a whole different genre of entertainment is what they're doing, is why they're not having the issues.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem is passing. Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It adopted five, one, one passing. Item number 15, the Passion Lounge, 10841 Q Street, Suite 115, 1670, 22 and 23, Class C liquor license, new application, old location, change of stockholders.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here with the applicant Caitlin Munson. I guess we would incorporate our comments from 14 to 15 if you'd let us do that and say we're here for questions.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Yes, Caitlin, I'm going to ask you some of the same questions I asked you before, but, because we were talking about just the Blue Martini in the beginning. With the Passion Lounge again, Alfredo Diaz Senior and Junior, how are they involved?
Alfredo Diaz Junior is my fiance again. He doesn't have a part into the business. Alfredo Diaz Senior does the same as, he's an employee for me and runs and gets the alcohol from the distributor for me as well.
Okay, all right. Does he write any paychecks?
No.
Does he handle any money?
No.
Is he an investor?
No.
Okay. You have some new furniture and a sound system in there. Who purchased that for you?
Alfredo Diaz. He did that with Hunter because Hunter was going through a vacancy part, so Alfredo Diaz did have credit on his account.
Senior or junior?
Senior.
Okay, so Alfredo Senior did buy the furniture and the sound system.
And then Hunter's making payments off of it from him.
Okay. You also, in your business plan, you have music. Is there hip-hop music?
No.
Okay, what kind of music?
We have, on Tuesdays, we have West Coast swing, like lessons and dancing. On Thursdays, it's salsa lessons and music. And then on Fridays and Saturdays, it's old-school music and also live bands.
Okay.
Whenever we have performers.
Now, that is the old Roxbury and that, that's in my district and that area has, or, facility was plagued with problems in the past. The neighbors and the other businesses around there have enjoyed the quiet. Have you talked to the business owners in the area? Have you talked to Dr. Curry in the dentist office right next door?
I haven't, but I will make sure well aware that I will.
Will you do that within the next two weeks?
Oh, yes.
All right, and let them know who you are and let them know what you're planning on doing because they have, they have had many problems in that area before.
Yes.
And they're going to be watching you very, very closely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that area in the past had had a lot of trouble serving minors. What are you going to do to assure us that you will not be serving minors?
I have a set agreement with Cowboy Security and they, we have security at the front door and the main guy from Cowboy Security, Will, he's been working with security for 18 years and he knows from a fake, from a real, all around, and he makes sure that we are 21 and over, no matter what.
Okay. And again, Sherry Sadle is this manager?
Yes.
For this also? And you said that you have taken a certified liquor management class, right? Has she?
Yes, she has.
Okay. And she's going to be at both places?
Yes.
On the premises?
Yes, she will be.
All right. All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Gurnat.
Caitlin, refresh my memory on your experience in operating this type of a gig.
Yes, I worked for Hunter and Sherry for many years at the Blue Martini as promoting, showing off their events, bringing in their crowds, bringing in the right kind of crowds because the Naughty Lounge, when it first was, the Naughty Lounge, it didn't have such a good crowd, and so we brought in different kind of people and controlled the atmosphere all around. So I pretty much promoted and brought in their kind of business.
And how long has it been since you've taken this liquor management course?
It was, I believe it was in December when I
And how long has it been since you've taken this liquor management course?
It was, I believe it was in December when I did it. It was before I took ownership.
Okay. Last year, right? December of last year?
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So, it was sort of a dream of yours to acquire a business and start out?
Yes.
And it looks like you're going double-barreled on?
Yes.
Between 14 and 15 here. All right. Well, all right. I'll give you one out of two.
(laughing).
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion approved. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passes a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted 6-0, one passing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16, Vintage Village Point Cinema, 304 North 174th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. You have a report from plan.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yeah. My name is Jeff Tomacek. I am the Executive Vice President for the Marcus Theater Corporation, and we are proposing the addition of a Peak Five Lounge to our Village Point Cinema in Omaha, located on 304 North 174th Street.
My name is Brian Shander. I'm the area manager for Marcus Theaters.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, could you review again the measures that you'll take to make sure that underage individuals are not purchasing?
Absolutely. We have, all of our servers and managers will be licensed, and we have our own professional training staff. The Marcus Corporation's been in business for 77 years. We've operated numerous lounges. We have 20 high-end hotel and resorts, and more than 50 movie theaters throughout the country. We card everyone, basically, basically everyone. Our threshold is 40 and under, to just make sure that there's, there's no questions, that someone doesn't get carded. We've never had a situation at any of our locations where we've even had a call to the police departments. We, we only allow maximum two drinks per guest, per valid ID. We have our own secret shopper service as well, that comes in monthly to all of our, all the locations where we sell alcohol, to make sure that we are personally making sure that our, that our servers are not selling any alcohol to minors.
This secret person, are they able, or are they in a position to also, because sometimes an adult will buy a beverage and then slip it to a teen?
Sure.
Does this person kind of walk around and monitor that, too, or?
They're, they're not responsible for that. They're responsible for making sure our bartenders do not sell, you know, any alcoholic beverages to minors. All of our theater manager, as well as all of our associates, are required to visit each of the auditoriums multiple times. We have infrared glasses that are available to make sure that if something looks suspicious, we have the ability to, you know, to identify it, and...
So, is, are you, are you willing to take a look at that, too? Adults who might buy it for a teen?
Well, we are constantly monitoring that. You know, the environment that we're in is, you know, generally it's not conducive to, you know, I mean, it's a dark environment, but, you know, most, you know, it's an environment where you have to be quiet, and, you know, most people, especially minors that are coming in, if they, if they want to drink, they usually don't want to do it in an environment where they have to, you know, sit in silence. But, yeah, we, you know, from, from Brian to our, our theater managers, to all of our associates, we train them. We go over what to look for, and, and...
And that's part of the training?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you're the third one in town that we'll have, and because the other two make it work, then I have to assume that you'll do a good job, too. But the other two are in another councilman's district, and this one's in mine.
Yeah.
And this is a persnickety district, okay? I mean, they, they count all of their chickens. So, let's, let's just do it right, okay?
Yeah. Well, just so you are aware, we, we are the manager for the Midtown Cinema.
Okay.
And so, we manage that from east of Omaha, so we manage the Glow Lounge there, the View Lounge, as well as all the in-theater dining and beverage service, so we're very experienced in this kind of environment.
All right. With that, my colleagues, I'll go ahead and move the motion for approval.
Second. Ms. Stothard.
Just a quick question. Since I go out to the Village Point all the time, so how do you, how do you serve it there? Is it just at the concession stand? Is it for parties? Because you're not going to be serving the food like Midtown does.
No. No, this is a little different setup. We are actually converting our party room and our game room, so if you're familiar with that area. We're actually making a self-contained lounge. I've got some pictures, if you want to kind of see what we're doing, so, or I could leave those behind, to kind of show you the space. So, the lounge itself will, will, you'll be able to buy a beverage inside the lounge, drink it there, or if you, if you wish to take it into one of the auditoriums, we'll pour it into. We have logoed glasses, so they're clearly marked, and, and you can, you can take it into the lounge, from the lounge into one of the auditoriums.
Aren't those party rooms really small, though? I thought they were...
Yeah, but attached to the party room is the game room, so the game room's going away, and we're bringing it out a little bit into the lobby.
Okay.
And it's not a huge lounge. We've got about 55 seats inside the lounge itself.
So, whether you, you drink it in the lounge or in the movie theater, you purchase it in the lounge? You don't purchase it with your pop card?
Yes. No. The concession stand is against the back wall and is totally separate. This is, this will be staffed with obviously adults, all licensed, so you will purchase it from a completely discreet location.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I have to apologize, I don't get out much. As a matter of fact, I'm probably in that crowd that you wouldn't card when I came back. But you did mention infrared cups?
No, not cups, glasses.
Infrared glasses?
Infrared glasses. So, so Brian or someone on his team could go into the auditoriums, and, and we can, you know...
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. I understand.
Because it's difficult to see in the dark, so...
All right. Fine. Thank you. You can scan.
Yeah. It's like the old, old-school military.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Item number 17, Marriott Courtyard, 1625 South 67th Street. Request permission to appoint Lee Jackson manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, myself, Lee Jackson, 1365 South 67th Street. It's in Exalvin Village at the Courtyard Marriott, and I'm a proponent.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item number 18, Ramada Plaza, Omaha, 3321 South 72nd Street. Request permission to appoint Chelsea Milks manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. I'm Chelsea Milks, the HR manager and project manager for Ramada.
And your address, please.
3321 South 72nd Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved 7 to 0. Item number 19, Mimmy's Cafe, 301 North 175th Plaza. Request permission to appoint Katrina Schmidt manager, with her present Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved 7 to 0. Item number 20, resolution that the city clerk is hereby authorized to approve special designated liquor licenses allowing the sale of alcoholic liquor between 6:00 AM and noon on March 17, 2013, for the celebration of St. Patrick's Day.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda should be taken up by the city council merely following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order. And we're going to remove item number 30 from the consent agenda for ordinances.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 29, or 21 through 29, were held on February the 5th, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed 7 to 0. Item number 30, ordinance to him in section 20-156.03, to allow the police department the authority to approve closed property applications, as well as the police chief, when we have the amendment of the hold.
Public hearing on agenda item number 30 begins now. Are there any proponents?
We already have the public hearing.
Excuse me. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of the many items that have come out of the various mayor's task forces that were started last year. Both my colleague to my left, Mr. Gray, and I served on both of those task forces. And the first part of this, I'll cover the police chief and/or designee, basically a housekeeping item that quickens up the process a little bit in regards to a designee approving closed property. The amendment as a whole, through the lengthy discussions that took place during the task force meetings, one of the ideas in the closed property is where a commercial property owner would approach law enforcement, in this particular case, the Omaha Police Department, and ask that their property be closed after hours. That way, if something would happen in their parking lot or anywhere on their property, law enforcement would not have to, if they spotted something wrong, or there was some criminal activity there, they didn't have to notify the owner at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. They could take care of the situation and then make the notification during normal business hours. The thought process was, why not extend this to include residential property? Would they have to go through the same process with the police department? Yes. Would they have to follow the same rules and regulations? Yes. Would this be applicable to agriculture? No, it would not. Say, if the Gernat household was experiencing some sort of problem, I could approach the police department and start the dialogue about maybe closing my, my property on specific hours where trouble may have been occurring. I'm not saying that I have problems at my house. I don't. Just using that as an, as an example. And this is the amendment as a whole, to where we can close some of the gaps that are occurring and allowing certain type of unacceptable behavior to take place that we can address by closing property after hours, but extending it to the residential side and offering that same measure to those folks, as opposed to just where it is right now with commercial Devil in the details, of course, are always worked out as this progresses, but we have talked this over with the police department. The planning department was involved at the time that they were supposed to be involved in, in this process. So, we feel that we have touched all bases, and I would encourage my colleagues to approve. I believe Mr. Gray has a few words as well, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Among the things that this, the amendment of the hold will do, first of all, is when we're talking about closed property signs, one of the things that is, that is critical for us is that we make sure that we get permission from the owner to place the closed property signs on the, on the, on their particular property. Part of the reason for doing that, and the main reason for doing that, is giving the police authority to go on some of the, to go on any of these empty lots where we have, where we've been given a permission, or abandoned buildings, or homes where, or houses where we have been given permission, without having to seek approval from the, the landowner or the property owner to go into those, those facilities. So, this gives the police, there was some ambiguity there between the placard sign and this issue with the closed property sign, but with the closed property sign, it gives the Police Department clear authority to go on property without asking that permission in advance, before they go on the property. We will be asking in advance of every landlord, homeowner, or who owns property, the opportunity to, to ask for a closed property sign, and we will make every effort to find some. But as you all know, many of my friends in the north, northern part of the, northeast part of the city know that there are a lot of absentee landlords who don't even live in the country, let alone the state. And so, as, to the extent possible, we will try to seek approval, and when we can't, we'll just go ahead and, and close those properties the way we have with this. So it's, it's a move forward in order to stop, you know, individuals, especially those that want to engage in illegal activity, from doing so easily, and it gives some, it gives some support to neighborhoods and neighborhood associations that their, their, the properties that they own are going to be a little bit more secure now that we have, now that we hopefully, after this vote, will have that closed property sign in place. So that's, you know, kind of the background of it. It's one of several pieces of legislation that we will be moving over the next few weeks, but we think this is one of the more critical pieces. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I, as I see this, this is just giving our public safety, police, fire, sworn officials, arson investigators, another tool and toolbox to address what is a major problem in our city. These problem properties present a real big attraction to people who engage in legal activities. They're a favorite target of arsonists. We have firefighters who, who risk their lives to, to respond to these properties, to put out fires. We've had firefighters injured, costing them their livelihoods, their families, a loved one who's been injured, and the taxpayers lots of money. And so, this is an innovative approach to address a significant problem that should yield results.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment hold is passed 7 to 0. That's it. That's all we need for this one.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 31 through 49 and 51 through 55 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
31 through 49, 51 through 55 are adopted 7 to 0. Now, item number 50, resolution appointment by the Mayor of Thomas Mulligan to be a member of the Visitors Advisory Board is hereby confirmed.
Motion approved. Roll call.
Yes.
Gernat.
Hmm.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Supposedly not a good chance.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Pass.
And Mr. President passes a second time. It's adopted 6 to 0. Ordinance on final reading, item number 56, special ordinance laying special tax for cutting and clearing weeds, group number 2013-04, and we have an amendment.
The public hearing on agenda item number 56 was held on February the 5th, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Is.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed as amended, 7 to 0. Now, 57 is special ordinance laying special tax for weeds, group number 2013-5, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on agenda item number 57 was held on February the 5th, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yeah.
Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Stothard.
Yeah.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed as amended, 7 to 0. Now, resolution, item number 58, resolution that sets track number 8, which the Ames Locust Area Redevelopment Plan is located, is hereby recertified and redesignated, and further that the attached Ames Locust Area Redevelopment Plan for the redevelopment of nearly 70-acre project site generally bounded by Cornish Boulevard to the north, North 13th Street to the east, Locust Street to the south, and North 13th Street to the west development and proposed Ames Locust Industrial Park, including the use of eminent domain, which includes financing by funding from state and local sources, including tax revenue, financing for future redevelopment projects, and private funding from foundations, is hereby approved.
Motion approved. The public hearing on agenda item number 58 was held on January 8, 2013, has been laid over since January the 29th, 2013. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we vote, I just wanted to comment and make a few statements about some claims that were made from the media, and also, there was an email I received from the mayor yesterday, and I just wanted to clarify a few things before we vote. The email from the mayor in particular stated that the City Council was holding this issue up in attempt to score political points, and that I in particular missed an opportunity to create jobs when we held up this project, but the rest of the City Council can right my wrong and create good jobs in North Omaha. I just wanted to state that this landowner that owned this property came to the city over two years ago with a plan and a proposal to develop this area. I, as well as the rest of the City Council, and I don't think there's anyone here, and I don't speak for them, but I don't think there's anyone on the council that doesn't support the industrial park proposal in this area. I moved to lay it over for two weeks and then an additional two weeks to allow the mayor to resolve issues regarding the current property owner. The city does have the authority to take private property by eminent domain. That is, they have the authority to do that. And with this project, it was to eventually turn it over to other private businesses. I think whenever government or the city of Omaha is going to attempt to take over a private property owner's property, it should always be done very carefully, and every landowner should be treated fairly and compensated adequately. It's about protecting private property owner's rights. And I would ask any private property owner in the audience, is if the government came in and wanted to take some of your property, or the possibility of taking it, and you felt like it was against your will, or that it was not, we weren't offering you what we thought it was worth, that you would expect us, as your elected officials, to stand up for you and at least give you time to negotiate? So I made a motion, the majority of the council agreed, two times to lay it over for four weeks, just four weeks. And let me remind you, the city's known about this property for over two years now. Now, I did want to ask just to, and clarify this, a few other items. Mr. Weaver, our Chief of Staff, I wanted to ask you a question.
Warren Weaver, Chief of Staff.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, when this was put on the agenda for the first time, four weeks ago, I was not briefed at all ahead of time that this was coming on the agenda. In other words, I was not briefed that this was going to be put on as a resolution. Was I the only one that was not briefed, or was, to your knowledge, was the rest of the council briefed, or was this put on the agenda without our knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, no one else was briefed. Our staff was not briefed. I know that.
Okay, so it was put on the agenda. And another thing, the first time it was on the agenda, there, in the legislative chamber, there was a mention of a grant from the state. Now, I did not know about this grant from the state until it was mentioned in the legislative chamber. To your knowledge, was anybody briefed about this grant before?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. And next, I would like to ask Mr. Cunningham, are you here? No. Chad. Chad, can I ask you a few questions from Planning Department?
I'll do my best, Chad Weaver, Planning.
Okay, Chad, we laid this over two weeks in an attempt to continue negotiations at the request of the landowner's attorney. We've had that opportunity now for two more weeks. To your knowledge, has the city and the property owner got together and met since the last time that we were in session?
I don't know that there have been face-to-face meetings. There have, there have been instances of correspondence and offers and counteroffers.
Okay. And then, the city does frequently use eminent domain. We have on many projects in the past, but it is a little unusual or not so common for the city to take private property, to turn it over to other private developers. Is that not true? Like in this case? And that's why we have to do it through, through the redevelopment plan, correct?
I, Chad Weaver.
Otherwise.
Sorry to say that it's unusual. It's not common. I don't, I wouldn't couch it as unusual.
Okay. Is there any end user for this developer, development right now?
To my knowledge, there's no specific user at this time.
Okay, so there's not a lot of developers that are lining up, as it was stated, with, with good quality jobs right now that you know of?
Well, we have found over the last several years that the opportunities that have been had required sites such as this. I'm not aware of awaiting this per se. Generally, they will go other places if they're that far along in their process.
Okay, so if this plan was approved today, since we gave the, the property owner and the city four extra weeks to negotiate, to try to come up with a price that both sides agreed on, and again, we're trying to protect private property owner's rights, if this is approved today, then this, this project could continue as planned?
Yes, at this time, we would proceed.
Okay. And there was the issue also that I mentioned before about the grant from the state that I first knew about the first time it was on City Council. Now, it was said a couple of weeks ago that if we didn't approve it last week, we could lose this grant, but we talked about this in pre-council this morning, and if it is approved today, we are still eligible, as far as you're concerned, for the grant.
There, there's a possibility of another extension being needed, but we'll be farther along, and we're hopeful that will continue to be the case.
Okay, and this grant is, was it from the DEQ?
Uh, no.
It was.
Development.
Okay, and it was about contaminated soil?
It's about jobs, job creation is my understanding.
Okay, it wasn't to evaluate the soil?
No.
Okay, all right. But as far as you know, that grant, we've asked for an extension, and so that grant is still available.
The deadline is 1st of April.
Okay, all right, all right. So again, I want to make the point that no one was blocking job creations. You know, the majority of the council approved the layover twice. Nobody was making any attempt to block a job creation or jobs in North Omaha. In my opinion, it was just to allow a private property owner a little more time to negotiate with the city and come up with a mutually agreeable price for the property, and also the private property owner wanted some, or the attorney had requested some public documents too. And at our last meeting two weeks ago, the city had not produced those public documents, and I felt like it was important that if they requested it, that we got those documents to them. I do see, I didn't know you were going to be here, but I do see Mr. Becker, who's the attorney for Mr. Anderson. Did you have any last statements that you would like to make tonight, today? You could approach if you want.
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport Street. I just want to inform the council, we did receive the response to our record request. I picked up the documents at 4:30 on Friday afternoon. I, whilst, there was about 626 pages, there were, there was a five-page list of documents withheld. So frankly, I expect that there are documents that we're want, want to see out of those documents withheld. It was somewhat unusual. I've been involved in document requests before. The WBE contract termination matter, I was one of the attorneys on that. That involved thousands upon thousands of pages, and we received that more promptly than we did this request. The bottom line is, we have some of the documents. We don't have all the documents. I don't mean to hold you up. I just want to inform you of that fact. In addition, we did receive a written proposal. We didn't think it was a meaningful move. One of the other council for the property owner engaged in a communication with Mr. Kratz while I was present. We had, we suggested an approach to try to resolve this. We have not gotten response back to that. So I don't want to necessarily hold you up. The bottom line is, we haven't got all the information that we've asked for. I still think the process is deficient in terms of whether or not the city has shown here what I think they need to do under the Redevelopment Act, and in particular, some of the cost-benefit analysis and some of the proof that we requested in our document request. I think that's still failing. I understand that you have your, your reasons for moving forward, and I do want to echo one thing that you said, Councilwoman. My client has never been against developing this site or doing something with it. We approached the city, the city in 2009 on a two-days' notice request. In 2011, we came back with an offer when they said, we need a proposal within two days. We came back at it. Those discussions fell by the wayside. So it's not been a situation where my client's been trying to delay this. You might recall, the very first request I made when I came here was not necessarily to object to a redevelopment plan, to say, let's put streets in here, let's make it TIF-eligible, et cetera. It was the notion of the condemnation issue and the threat to take it, which we think adversely affects the property value, because if we have some other user that we target that might want to acquire this property, especially because the city doesn't have an end user, if you have a resolution out there saying, we're going to get it, we're either negotiate it or we're going to take it, that in effect affects our property value because any other subsequent buyer that we may have is chill, and that's our problem and concern. But to echo your statements, we're not against redevelopment. We were just looking for a cooperative process. You know, part of the issue is, we started negotiating in 2009, we had discussions of price in 2011. We find out in 2013 that the city has an appraisal from 2010 that it's basing its negotiations on. If we had gotten that earlier, if we had gotten that when we last discussed in 2011, we might be further along in the process. But the bottom line is, we don't have all the information we have, we hope for, we don't have all the responses. I understand that the council may want to move forward. Just for the record, we don't think that they've demonstrated all they're really supposed to do under the statutory process to, to meet the requirements of the Redevelopment Act. In addition, if I had all the documents and there wasn't so much withheld, there were very well maybe other issues I could raise.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm aware of that. I'm aware, Mr. Anderson, once that property developed, because that's why you approached the city years ago, and as the rest of the council does. Thank you, Mr. Becker. But I just want to let the audience know, and those that are listening too, that I have always handled issues in the past and I will in the future also the same way, and I think the city must have a high standard, and they must show we've negotiated in good faith, and we've treated property owners fairly, and we have a good sound plan for the property used before taking anyone's private property. And to me, this was just an issue of protecting the citizen because there was the possibility of eminent domain in this motion, if we would approve it. But we've, we've given the two weeks' time that they have requested, and I think that if they will continue negotiating after this is, I'm sure will be approved today, then I can't see in any way, shape, or form where any jobs have been blocked, or anybody made any attempt to block any kind of development at all. And so I think with that, that's all I have to say today, but, all right, that's probably
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, I seconded the motion to approve this today and did not support previous layovers, so I'm supportive of what we're going to do here today. I will say, I don't know if all council members were briefed, but I should acknowledge on the record that the Planning Committee was. Three of us did get a briefing from the Planning Director on this item before it came on the agenda, so we were at least aware of it and its implications. And as has been pointed out in previous discussion over this matter, I mean, this, this is occurring in the area of, one of the areas of highest poverty in our city, one of the areas of highest unemployment in our city, and that's unacceptable. And if approved today, negotiations will continue. In fact, they must continue under state law, I think, for 30 days, so I really don't think that's the issue either. I think the issue is, we shouldn't wait any longer to make sure we're making this development happen and become a reality, making sure we're making job creation a reality in North Omaha. So with that, that concludes my comments. I think, I do think the council's prepared to act today, and I think we should.
Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we first had this in front of us, I guess I was advised after the meeting that I became a little animated during my portion of the discussion in regards to getting the city and Mr. Becker's clients to the table and talk this over. This is nothing personal. I think the applicant, the owner of the property realizes that. I'm convinced that the city of Omaha realizes this. My goal that day was, yeah, they did get together, and I was hoping by my verbiage and my sincerity that they would actually get into a room and lock the door and not leave until they either had an agreement or they come to an impasse. Okay. Obviously, that did not happen. All right. So we're here today with the resolution in front of us to proceed. I am convinced at pre-council this morning and at our Planning Committee this morning, there was quite a bit of discussion in regards to this particular resolution and the process that has been attached to it. We sort of rehashed the whole thing over again. To me, that the city, we, we understand as a city, and I believe the property owner understands that when you go into negotiation, some have to give a little, the other have to give a little, and back forth till you meet a common ground. I was hoping that that would happen by now. It has not. But I have been assured that if this resolution passes today, as Councilmember Festerson has said, that we are mandated by law to continue negotiations. I also have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chad Weaver, my colleague, Mr. Festerson, at the Planning Committee meeting this morning. The director even said, when asked, that if this passes, will negotiations continue? The answer was emphatically yes. Well, there might have been an expurgative thrown in there too.
Nothing here.
Yeah. And I asked the administration. And I asked the administration's chief of staff the same question. The answer again was yes, negotiations will continue. Mr. Becker, would you mind coming up? I'm going to ask you the same question.
We would fully hope and expect that fruitful negotiations can continue. The last round was, we received a written offer. We didn't really think it was a credible move. We thought it was more a little posturing. The other council for the landowner had a discussion with Mr. Kratz about a proposal to try to, create a proposal to try to get the parties closer. So right now, that's the last communication. We're somewhat waiting a response to that. We hope that it continues.
Could we have your name, please?
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport.
Beat me to the punch, Mr. Brown. So you couldn't answer a definite yes or a definite no. You're hoping that negotiations continue. Even though that you have stated that certain laws have said this and certain laws have said that. And we have gone, and we have jousted back and forth like normal debate handles.
As I indicated--
All I'm saying is, I just want a simple yes or no.
The property owner wants to try to reach an accommodation with the city. We approached the city, and so I hope that negotiations continue. From our perspective, the ball's in the city's court. We've made a counterproposal. And so basically, for negotiations, we need a response to that. So yes, we want to continue negotiating in good faith, and we hope that we get a credible response. The property owners made significant, significant moves unilaterally on at least three different occasions to bring the price down, to come up with creative ways to try to knock the price down in other fashions for the city. And so we're basically waiting a response to that. But I hope that we get a response from the city and that we can continue to move forward.
I feel like I'm in the Hegel hearings here. Thank you, Mr. Becker. I see other lights on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jarom.
Yes, I would begin by saying that in the summer of last year, when we were doing the budget and the CIP process, there was extensive discussion about appropriating first-time dollars for the North Omaha Industrial Park for Ames Locusts. So since the summer of last year, this body was placed on notice and had access to the information documents that the planning department had, the finance department had, the CIP, I believe, and the planning department handles that, that we could have dug as deep into that as was available at the time. So really, several months ago is when this came on, and we all debated that because there were issues of appropriations of funds for that. Then, there were issues raised as this came forward that we find out that, well, you know, actually, it was the planning committee of the council was briefed on this some time Then there was an issue raised about whether the owner got notice. And we were told by Bridget Hadley that they had, that she would get the documents. We received today a timeline from her with accompanying signed certificate, certified mail, proof of services from September of 2012, signed for by the Andersons of the redevelopment plan, acknowledging the document had been sent, that by its own terms, in two different places says, "The use of eminent domain will only be used if negotiations fail." So the notion and the framing somehow of this debate to cast this as some hostile takeover of landowners' individual property rights, to me, is misplaced. That while there can always be improvements in communications and in tactics and in negotiation strategies, what has happened here is a process that is deliberate began when the CIP process begins, which in case you didn't know, before we get the budget, folks, guess when the CIP process starts in the planning department? February. So for the summer budget coming up, for those of us who are interested in doing things or making requests on CIP dollars, we have to, by the end of this month, get our letters to the planning department. So it's, this is not anything, I think, that hasn't been going on a while or is in some aggressive effort to take from the Andersons without due process, without negotiation, fair negotiation, and without a process that won't continue to try to reach amicable negotiated We were then told, well, take that language about the eminent domain out. The Andersons' council advocated about a month ago. Then our lawyer tells us, well, that's kind of a clever move because if you do that, you negate everything you did and you have to start all over. So, and I'm not impugning any motives or anything, Mr. Becker. But, you know, your clients told you they didn't get notice. I see here signed certificates for certified mail that they did. I see a Chamber of Commerce timeline of involvement. It's multiple contacts and entries on this. I see another certificate return for certified mail in January of this year from the Andersons'. So for me, that's why I've voted to move this project forward now twice. Hopefully, today, I won't be in the minority anymore. But it's time to let actions speak louder than words with regard to revitalization of North Omaha. And that's the true measure of whether you are investing in an area of our city that has levels of poverty and unemployment that ought to be an embarrassment to us as a community, that we should not tolerate. And no, there will not be immediate jobs. To say that there will is folly. It would give false hopes. But we know from the planning department, we know from our economic development partner at the Chamber, that you have no shot of getting business, industrial business, if you don't have these pre-built pads. And we can't go to prospective clients and say, "Come on into the North Omaha Industrial Park. Every day we delay. Every week that we delay is one more week that the process is delayed." And now, we heard this morning, the city's had two delays, and I'm not casting blame on anyone as to whether granting the extension is right or wrong. I'm not here to impugn anybody's motives. I don't think anyone had bad motives. But to place at risk $450,000 in State Department of Economic Development dollars after two extensions, that's significant dollars to help create jobs in North Omaha by developing this parcel. In the April 1 deadline, if there's no negotiated agreement in all of the process, and if eminent domain would have to be launched, then the city has to go back to the state with its, you know, tail between its legs and it's begging for more time, which it may or may not get. So let's not place any more risk on the state grant. Let's not delay any further, not even one day, one hour, our efforts to revitalize and bring jobs to North Omaha. And let our action and our vote here today speak louder than any word that anyone has said or any email that anyone sent as to getting this process started. So I intend to again vote yes today.
The city council does have a short legislative process, three weeks from start to finish. First week is first reading, second reading, third reading. And we do routinely lay over items that the council feels needs additional time to get additional information, to better vet the issues. And I will say this, at the very beginning of this process, there was a certain amount of ambiguity that was present. And I did not feel comfortable with the information that we had in front of us. So I did vote for both of the extensions to lay over the items for a month. And I think that has done what it was intended to do. I know I feel much better prepared. I think the rest of the council does feel better prepared as to understanding what the issues were. This was certainly no attempt on my part to delay any type of economic development, but rather, I would prefer to be correct from the get-go as to not possibly delay any economic development later on. So having said that, I am prepared today to vote in favor of moving this resolution along. And I have a couple of other of my colleagues that have additional comments, and we will go forth after that. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed that there's quite a few people in the audience. So just for the record, if you're in, if you want this to pass, if you're in favor of this, would you please stand? Thank you. You may be seated. Let the record show there's about 25, 30 people who stood. And some of those people are very influential. I take counsel from them. And these, I don't think anybody that stood are the types that haven't thought it through very well. In fact, I grew up with some of them, and I remember this area as being a very tough area. So even though I'm a West Omaha boy now, I do serve the whole city, and I do understand the need for development here. And what I'm hearing is that housing development is okay, but we need more than that. We need business development and opportunities for job placement. So I'm going to go ahead and support this, and I'm going to also support it for the fact that I feel that we've done our due diligence, we've done our due process. One of the things that you'll always notice about me is, because I've been here for a long time, is that I try to protect this council and the administration, I should say just the council because I have to worry about us, from lawsuits. And so sometimes when it's a need to have a pause in the action to make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, then I'll go ahead and do that. But the greater good always wins out, and I believe that pushing this development is key for North Omaha. We have got to do more than just housing development. We've got to do economic development, and I think this does it. Mr. Gray? So you have my support.
Ms. Stothard.
Just one last point to Mr. Mulligan's point. You know, I can't tell you how many times in the past three and a half years or so that we have laid over items because I do firmly believe it is the city council's responsibility to make sure that we understand what we're voting for. And there's been many occasions that I was ready to vote and other council members wanted to lay over. You know, we sometimes use the term "the battling attorneys" when we have two attorneys from two different sides standing up before us with different points of view. And it's always good to thoroughly understand what you are voting on, for us to do our due diligence, and I think you would be disappointed in us if we didn't. But I think at the end of the day, and I will speak for all the council, we want what's best for Omaha, and we want what's best for our citizens of Omaha. And so a four-week layover on a project that's been sitting around for quite a while, we feel satisfied that we got the answers that we wanted to get, and we gave the property owner time. Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank those of you who came down today, Senator Council, the Empowerment Network, Pastor Ashley, whose church is right across the street from that site, and Preston and some of our Neighborhood Association representatives are all here. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for coming down. And thank you, too, Bruce, for coming down to be supportive of this. This council, quite frankly, has done a number of great things to move North Omaha forward and the rest of Omaha forward as well. I was very, I'm very proud of this council, and I'm very proud of the things that we have done to turn things around and to really legitimize a very strong effort to move in a positive direction towards economic development and restoration of several of our areas in North Omaha where we've got blighted and substandard conditions. This is an effort, and this, I was a little emotional about this one because of the good work that we've done, I didn't want us to balk at this particular effort. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for coming down and being supportive, and also understanding the importance of where we are and the necessity to continue to move forward and build infrastructure so that we can develop a business park, hopefully, that will attract manufacturing companies that will be able to hire and employ members of our community. As most of you all know, this site sits right across the street from a census tract where the poverty level is at 50%. And as Councilman Jarom said, that ought to be, that ought to be an embarrassment to all of us. And to continue to work on that is an effort that I intend to engage in. And this council, again, I'm very proud of the work that this council has done. I'm very proud of the work that a number of you in this community have done as well to place North Omaha at the forefront and doing everything possible within the correct standards and operating efficiently, and sometimes taking our time to make sure that we get it right with the North Omaha master plan and a number of other things for 24th and Lake Street and what we're going to be doing tomorrow, announcing the groundbreaking for a Walmart and a Planet Fitness that took the chance to come to North Omaha and is now, you know, awfully glad that they did because of the support that they're getting. So I just want to thank you all and thank this council for the efforts that we have done these last four years to move Omaha forward in a very strong way, and specifically North Omaha. With that, Mr. President, if there are other lights, I would call a question, please.
Mr. Clark, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernan.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernan.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Three to twenty-nine. Item 65 orders to approve the Elkhorn Area Redevelopment Plan in an area generally bounded by Glenn Street on the north, Blondo Street on the south, 204th Street on the east, 207th Street on the west. A planning board, planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 65 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 66 orders to approve an agreement between the city and Douglas County to provide partial funding for one gang-gun prosecutor in the violence gang, crime gang-gun prosecution unit.
Public hearing on agenda item number 66 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items number 67 shall be held on March 5. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items number 68 through 70 shall be held on February 26. Chairman of Board of Equalization reports approval of their plans and assessments and adjustments made at the regular meeting held February 5. We need a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernan.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernan.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Three twenty-nine.